Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education to order tonight. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Next time for the... Let me have it.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have chairs for all of these nice guys standing and ladies? Sorry, we don't have enough chairs in this room. Do we have public comments this evening?
No, sir, you do not.
No public comments, okay. At this time, we have Dr. Kogbo to tell us the vision of the school.
Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society. Vision statement. Code of Ethics for School Board Members, Policy 2120. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should: Avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board. Avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board. Avoid the misuse of public funds. Avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts. And avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Thank you. At this time, I want to recognize some of our special guests that we have here. We have the press corps, Noah, and also Mr. Horner, Zack. We welcome any other press person in, anybody else. We also want to welcome commissioners who are here, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Odom, and our county manager, who is also here, John Crumpton, thank you for being here. We have our architect here, Mr. Height, and all the other guests. You are special guests to us and our teachers. So I just want to welcome all of you, and we would have had this meeting this past week, but because of the inclement weather, we're having it today. So thank you for coming to our meeting, and you are very special to us. Thank you. At this time, I would like a motion for the approval of the agenda for...
Mr. Chair, I'm making a motion. I'll make a motion to approve our agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a set, all in here, will say aye?
Aye.
The motion carried. The next thing we have is the approval of the minutes of 2/13/2018.
Mr. Chair, I'm making a motion. We approve the minutes of February 13th, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a set, all in here, will say aye?
Aye.
The motion is approved. At this time, we have the chairman's report. We have so many things happen in the last few weeks since we've been out. Some of it overlapped with superintendent, but I'm not going to do part of the job. We know the Quiz Bowl, people are here. We also know that we have the Spelling Bee, and also I want to recognize that this past month, we have the City Advisory Committee that was mandated by the state. And we have a new chair for that, Mr. Pedley, was the chair, and Bill Horner was the vice chair for the school city group. So, and I just want to welcome everyone of you here. We have so many things, but I will let the superintendent talk about some of the good things that has happened. We're so proud of our students and what they do for our school, and how they make all of us proud.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's with great pleasure, Knight. I'd like to ask Stephen Roman to come to the podium, please. And I'm gonna have him introduce our Lee County High School Quiz Bowl team champions. And it's a wonderful honor to win this award once. I think Mr. Roman is ready to print up some T-shirts to say, "Three Pete, County Champions, from Lee County High School." And Mr. Roman, I'll turn the floor over to you.
So not all of our members could be here, but we do have a fairly good representation. Do you want them all to come up?
Yes.
And then the other thing that's...
Whether they like it or not, the newspaper just made the news. Everybody's picture.
The other thing, the other thing that's always customary for superintendent's award winners, to get to take a picture with the board. So it's a little tight here, but I think we can get everybody in and have the board have their picture.
Now, the honored guests are supposed to be in front, but since we're all shorter than you guys...
Have you scoot in, that way we won't be as...
Perfect, yep, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, yep.
You good?
Everybody here with you?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, you know. He's actually, he's actually helping the coach now. Well, we got some, but anymore. At least for the other people, I'll make sure they hear. Thank you, appreciate it.
It's like everybody trying to get down to church pew.
I like he goes without saying, too, just like the parents, too, to ask for transgressive support on these kids.
Absolutely.
Next, we'd like to recognize our Spelling Bee champion for this year. I'd like to ask Anna Boone to come forward, please. I'd also like to have Gail Smith and Shannon Shew to come forward as well. Anna beat out the competition for Spelling Bee this year, our countywide champion, and gets the opportunity to go to Washington D.C. Shannon, your gears, just like to say a couple words about Spelling Bee.
Well, she is an A, Anna's an eighth grader at Sally Middle School, and we're very proud of her. She was our district champion. She competed against about 20 other students, 21, 22 other students for the championship, and we're excited for her. And I'm sure the date...
The competition starts May 31st to June 1st, no, excuse me, May 27th to June 1st, with the finale at the 300, May 31st. May 31st at 8:00, maybe the finale, until we see her there.
And her family will be at the Davidwood Resort Convention Center. It's actually in Maryland, but they traveled Washington and back down there. We're very excited for her family.
Ma'am, if you don't mind, just a point first, but I just wanted to let you know that I was there, and it was raining and it was cold, and I was extremely proud of the way you handled the Spelling Bee, and particularly of the parents and the students. I mean, I taught them extremely well. They actually stuck around even after, of course, you moved them away. They just, and they stuck around to support you, and I was extremely impressed with that. And again, if you will get those dates, I was gonna try to get you a guest on a trip to D.C. But thank you so much, I was really impressed. Hey, good luck.
Yes, ma'am.
I know Sherri won blocking it.
Three, two, one. All right, perfect. Thank you.
Congratulations. This time, I'd like to ask Jennifer Allen to come forward. I believe you're representing the group tonight. Just want to recognize Floyd Knight as the Clean School Month Award, and I know, I know how hard your custodians work, and make sure Floyd Knight is clean, taken care of. Any words you'd like to share?
Just, you know, just to piggyback on what you said, our staff do an excellent job to get our school ready for our kids to come and ready to learn. It's been a difficult month for us. We've had a big, as other schools, we've had a big mass of the flu. Even we had the help department out. So I mean, we've done a really good job, and it's a team effort to keep it, to keep it ready and in tip-top shape. And thank you to the maintenance department, they really stepped in and help us on a daily basis. So I appreciate the recognition. We all, it's a team effort, and we all pull our load. So, thank you.
Finally, with our accountability update, we are getting ready to go into our sort of last quarter benchmarks at the elementary and middle and high school level. We were a little nervous beginning of the week with the weather, but we've had a pretty good run with, we have an uninterrupted teaching and learning, and certainly glad that it's gotten up and going. And I believe we're just a couple weeks away from spring break. I actually heard some people start talking about in the last couple days that we're just a couple weeks out from spring break, so everybody's looking forward to that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan. I just want to say something about this man during the weather. Last week, he started telling me about the weather, and giving me daily, twice, daily up-to-date information about what's going on with the weather. So he's a real weatherman, and then he will have to drive around the county with Chris and all of the, and what do you call it?
Mr. Kegel.
Mr. Kegel. Who have to make sure everything is ready, and we don't want to put any of our young people's lives in jeopardy or any situation like that. So he works very hard, even when the school is closed. So he's earning all of, all of the money we're paying him.
Well, it was a tough weather week, and we'll just leave it at that.
Thank you for what, thank you for what you do. So at this time, I will call on the committees, we have a committee reports. CNI.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. The Elementary and Curriculum and Instructions Committee met on Wednesday, March 14th, at 3:30 at Broadway Elementary School. Board member Patrick Kelly was on hand to discuss adding 10 minutes to the day for the upcoming 2018-2019 school calendar. This would circumvent rescheduling missed school days due to inclement weather such as snow, ice, and/or power outages through the storms. Ms. Gail Smith gave an update to multi-tiered systems of support, also referred to as MTSS. This framework promotes school improvements through engaging research-based academics and behavioral practices. The six North Carolinas' MTSS critical components include leadership, building the capacity infrastructure for implementations, communications and collaboration, database problem solving, three-tiered instructional intervention models, and data evaluation. Broadway teachers Wendy Motley and Laurie Kern presented best practices on standard-plus visual literacy, which is using wordless books to foster transfer of knowledge, cooperative learning, enter, enter learning, and to date, three books have been completed using this method. The first graders are evaluated on what they see on the page in the book. Language skills are then utilized and measured as to how each student effectively described what they saw on the pages. The standard-plus visual literacy integrates with AVID and the North Carolina Core Standards for Reading. The next elementary and CNI committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 9th, at Greenwood Elementary School. Mr. Chair, this concludes my report.
Also, I want to, I have a special announcement to make about Ms. Livingston, the North Carolina Main Street Champion. On behalf of Downtown Sanford, Inc., at the North Carolina Main Street Conference this morning, so congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. It's a great honor and a pleasure to be there and represent Downtown Sanford, and I'm honored to have received that award today. Thank you.
At this time, I will call on Mr. Kelly to give the report for Facilities and Technology because Dr. Smith was out one time during the meeting, so he chaired the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, the Facilities and Technology Committee met on February 27th, and the, some first item on our agenda was the running track for Lee County High School. It was a consensus of the committee to award the Lee County High School Running Track prep bid to the Saddlefield pavement in the amount of $139,119.47. All this work will be done during the summer 2018, and we'll find the funding source for this in the 2018-2019 budget, as we learned earlier today. And this is under our consent agenda for today as well. It was also brought to our attention that we will have a surplus auction, and it was a consensus of that committee to approve that the school system have the auction, and that the auctioneer would be Lisa York. And this sale will take place 9:00 a.m. on April 18th, 2018, at the Jonesboro Elementary School site, and at the Lee County School Transportation Department as well. And again, you'll find this under our consent agenda for this meeting. Also, our third item was the YMCA license agreement. It was a consensus of the committee to approve the licensed agreement with YMCA, and again, you'll find this under our consent agenda for tonight. And Superintendent Dr. Bryan reported that the WB Wicker renovation bids will be open on Wednesday, March 7th, at 3:00 p.m. in this very room, Assembly Room, and that there was a scheduled call meeting for FNT on March 8th, at 4:00 p.m., also in this building upstairs in the conference.
Actually worked that day. I don't do that much anymore, and I do appreciate the chairman sitting in on the committee meeting. I would like to report on our March 8th meeting, we only had one item on our agenda, and that was the WB Wicker Pre-K5 STEAM School Bid. The WB Wicker Pre-K5 STEAM School Bids were open on March 7th, 2018. American South General Contractors Incorporated is a low bidder, with a total bid price plus alternate totaling $22,468,500. The bid is approximately $500,000 over budget. It was a consensus of the committee to authorize Architect Jimmy Height to negotiate with an open bidder to make reasonable modifications to the scope of the WB Wicker project to bring the price within the amount of funds budgeted. This item will be placed on the March 12th meeting, which is tonight, Board of Education under, under New Business. And in fact, Architect Mr. Height is here, and he will be available for comments when this comes up under New Business. And as Mr. Kelly indicated, our next meeting is scheduled for April 24th.
Thank you. The next one is Mr. Kelly, too, for finance.
All right, Mr. Chairman, our finance committee meeting, February 27th, 2018. The first item that we took care of at that committee meeting was the audit contract for 2018 to 2019. Upon the recommendation of Ms. Kelly Jones, she proposed that Anderson Smith and White provide our audit services for the coming year for a maximum fee of $34,250, plus reimbursement for reasonable out-of-pocket expenses. This will require a period adjustment to be recorded, and we have our, for any of the other details about the audit, you can find them in our committee minutes provided to you. Our next item was our 2018-2019 budget presentation, which Dr. Bryan informed the committee that we would have our budget meetings. The first one was today, March 15th, followed by one coming up this Monday. And then also, that was also, Dr. Bryan provided us the information on our lease, Lee County Schools lease agreement funding, which deals with our lease for mobile, mobile units, and also for parking lots such as Broadway School, Broadway Customary Church, that we lease every year from them for adoption. Other than that, our board expenses were provided, and they're in our FYI packet, and with that, our meeting was adjourned.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to the policy committee, Ms. Bowman.
The policy committee met on 20 February, and we had four items on for discussion. We had Policy 2010, Board and Superintendent Relations, Policy 5005 on the Public Information Program, 5070 on public records, and 8310 on the annual audit. All of the discussion that night did not result in an actual action item, but will be brought back to the committee next month for further detail. So with that, our policy meeting was adjourned, and we will be meeting again on March 27th.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'm making a motion that we approve our consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion, we have a set, all in here, will say aye? Motion carried. Now we have the new business. WB Wicker. Do you want Mr. Height to come forward?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education authorize an architect to negotiate with the low bidder to make reasonable modifications to the scope of the WB Wicker project to bring the price within the amount of funds budgeted.
We need a second?
Second.
Another second. All in here, will say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The motion is approved. Mr. Height, move forward.
I think everybody got a bit of it. See that our local contractor was as successful as it is for the project, so I see that as a big plus. American South did the work releasing the high school, and they did a very good job in that facility that we're all very proud of. The process moving forward is for me to contact Andy Miles, he's the, he's running that project for the company, and Andy and I are gonna get together ASAP to talk about options to bring back to the Facilities Committee for their consideration. Some of these options were discussed in the Facilities Committee. They're probably going to end up being two or three dozen things if you look at them. But I'm hopeful, I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to do what we've been charged with, is to bring the project to within the budget and move forward.
I have a couple of questions, if I may. The first is, where would one go about finding the spec book and plans for this? Because I did not even realize that the bid packages had gone out when we got a finalized bid. And I know several contractors here in town that did not know that this bid had already gone out. And so I was just wondering, how was that notified, number one? And where would we, as a board, get the spec book so that we can look at what they were asked to price?
All of the documents are online, and anyone with any interest, somebody has to call our office for the password.
So it's on your system, it's not on ours anywhere?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And the reason we do that is because during the bid process, we issue a vendor. So we want to make sure that everyone goes to one place to get the necessary information.
How did you do the invite for these bids?
We advertised in the Greater Diversity Press, Louisiana Observer, and the Sanford Herald.
I just wasn't aware, and like I said, I know several contractors in town that had no idea that this had gone out for bid. And when we voted to do a single prime bidding last month, then that was the first step to this process, and then the fact that we already had bids back was astounding to me. I thought that was pretty quick. And like I said, I was just kind of shocked that we had this out, and we, as a board, haven't even seen the final drawings. How do we go about getting that?
Well, they're available on our website.
Could you send that to all the board members?
Absolutely.
Just an email with, here's the link, here's what...
Yes, ma'am.
That would be fantastic, because it just seemed like there's a lot of information that had already been moved on that we were completely in the dark of. And, you know, transparency, transparency, transparency. We want to see it from start to finish, because I don't want any surprises. And when I was reading about glass handrails in the Sanford Herald, that shocked me, because I didn't even know that that level of detail had been completed on this project. So I think that we've got to get a better communication of information. So, that Sanford Herald knew more about the design of the school than I did, and I found that shocking.
I will, I will, I will say, concerning the budget, concerning the proposal, how many people did you, did the bid?
How many bids? Six bidders.
Six bidders?
If I may, the announcement was also on our website.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
The announcement was also on our website.
Mr. Height, first of all, I would like to compliment you on something. We had, contrary to what, you know, you read in the local papers or whatever, getting to the facts, I had the opportunity to speak with Dan Matthews from DPI. And I, even though the law did not require you to do it now, because we do not have possession of that property, you took the initiative, according to their documentation, that on the 6th, we sat and had a meeting here in November. On the 7th of November, we approved that. During the month of November, I'm told that you, you went to DPI and you presented the school, way above, above and beyond what you would have had to do as a new school if, in fact, the school was already in our possession. So I just thought that was, I just wanted to thank you, because I thought that was great that you took the initiative to do that. Now, my question is, during the process, when you did take this before DPI, and we do know, some people do not realize this, but DPI doesn't give an approval. They give you suggestions and comments, but it doesn't have to be approved by them, particularly until it's turned over to us as the school, because it belongs to a private party right now, the facilities, am I correct? So my question is, on the 14th of November and on the 31st of January, there was an email with recommendations that were sent back to yourself, the Superintendent Chris McMill, and Dr. Atkinson. Would you care to discuss what the recommendations are, the communication between DPI and this program?
I'm not sure what those recommendations said. I'm sure I could go into the file. You might remind me.
And I can send you the dates as well. As a matter of fact, our superintendent and Chris Donalds, and, well, Dr. Atkinson has retired, but all of those members were CC'd in that email as well. The date was the 14th of November and the 31st of January, and I feel that the board should be aware of some of their possible concerns or recommendations. and I feel that the board should be aware of some of their possible concerns or recommendations, because I would like to think, of course, as you present the case, and then you've discussed how much it would cost as far as some of the key things, like asbestos and the lead and those things. But it would help the board, I believe, to be able to see what the recommendations were from DPI.
Sure, absolutely.
Like, the architectural recommendations?
Well, I mean, they are...
There was two architectural ones that were sent out, and the engineering one is still pending. So, you will have, at least two were sent forward already, the 14th of November and the 31st of January, and then the engineering one is still pending. They're going, it takes them a while to do that. They have to talk to a lot of people, you know?
Right. I can give you an update on where they are now.
Okay.
Um, and I'm not sure, the earlier, the preliminary review comments, uh, apparently they were incorporated. But if they weren't, we came to an agreement, because, uh, the architectural review for the final plans, there were zero comments. I've never had that happen before, and I don't know why.
That's a good thing.
I guess the guy was having a good day. The structural comments were approved yesterday. I got that email. The mechanical and, uh, plumbing engineer, they have a vacancy at DPI right now, so they are not reviewing those. But the electrical engineer reviewed our electrical engineer's drawings. Those comments were replied to probably a week ago, and they made a request, uh, date before yesterday, to send us the revised drawings, that, you know, where we complied with our recommendations and we fixed the drawings. So, that was done yesterday. The file was too big, so we had to send it to pieces this morning. So, I expect to get their, uh, their certificate of review, maybe tomorrow, certainly next week.
Do you have an estimate of how much the asbestos removal is going to be, one million, two million?
Uh, the asbestos removal is being handled by a separate consultant, um, EEC, uh, who has worked with the system, uh, before. Mike Schreimacher is in charge of that.
It's $60,000.
And this is outside of the, um, American South General Contractors bid? You're saying this is a separate entity and not housed within this budget? This is a second, second, uh, uh, one time, a separate contract with this entity. Understood.
Okay. Mr. Law?
Yeah, while, while he's here, uh, uh, there was a, a letter to the editor of Sanford Herald that, and I quote, says that WB Wicker plans, uh, violated the law, 115C521, and so we, of course, we didn't violate the law, and that was my opinion and also the opinion of other people. I talked to Mr. Matthews, uh, in Raleigh, and I've known him for a long time, and I just wanted you to tell you what he told me. He told me that, uh, Lee County Schools and their architect, including, mentioning you, went above and beyond what was required to do in this project. He told me that, and I want you to know that. And, uh, he said, he agreed to meet the statute that was alleged that we violated was not violated. And so, I wanted you to know that Mr. Matthews, he said, he told me that he had no, zero comments about your presentation. So, basically, he, uh, very complimentary.
I just want to say something. Uh, what I read, what we all read in Sanford Herald is, uh, is disgraceful and appalling by the right to call us that were corrupt. I don't know any corruption about me. I don't know anybody that have come to give me anything. I'm just doing for these children, and to insult a board, someone can play on a libel lawsuit to be, to be insulting this board as a board chair is dis, is very disgraceful, that they're saying this board is corrupt. I've not seen anything that we have done as the board that is corrupt. And it's very shameful for anyone to call this board a corrupt board. I'm not corrupt, and I don't think all these gentlemen and ladies are corrupt. So, I just want to say that has nothing to do with you, but to call us corrupt is very, very shameful from the aspect, and the law that was called it was not correct by the quotation. And from what Mr. Law is saying, what, from what you're saying, you have given us the best that you can do, and we appreciate that. So, at this time, I will ask, uh, Dr. Smith, uh, if you have a, a motion or something for us to...
Uh, the motion, the chairman has already been made.
The motion is stand, yeah.
It's already made.
Okay.
May I ask a question? What is, what is still your projected date of completion so that we can open up the school, WB Wicker?
We bid the project with a specific number of days. And if we can get started by the end of next month, we'll have it done in July of 19.
You said next month, as in April 18?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I want to, I want to make sure, since we're kind of toward the beginning of this one, okay, April?
If we can begin the project by the end of...
April 18, completion July 19.
We should be able to complete the project by July of 19.
Is there anything that you need from the board to facilitate that?
Well, all we'll need is...
The county manager's sweating.
I'm not sweating.
We need to get the contractor now to where it needs to be. The contractor needs to provide us his insurance bonds. We need to have an executed contract, and the money needs to be in the bank. And if all those things happen, then we can start.
Thank you, Lord Jimmy. Anybody else that's not asked any question, I want to, if you have any question, before we come to the seat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm glad you've been through this work for you so far, and we're forward to the next step.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
At that time, uh, this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we move in a closed session, that Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, non-public record, and North Carolina Bureau of Customs and Securities, 143, 318, dot 11A.
One, two, three, say aye?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we return to open session.
Second.
All the people say aye?
Aye.
We need a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the personnel report after presented by Assistant Superintendent John Conway.
Second.
All the people say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make the most important motion of the night, a motion that we adjourn.
Second.